This Livingston. I don't know if it is. Is it working? I feel like a Luddite.
Sounds good.
It's working, okay. This Livingston City Commission meeting is called to order. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Noots.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Wilich.
Here.
Uh, my apologies in advance to Chair Kale for forgetting how to run a meeting, but I'm gonna do my best in your absence, or distance rather. So, um, first on the agenda is public comment. So this is, public individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. So this is a good time to give public comment on anything that's a consent item, or any topic that's not otherwise on the agenda. We have our first person up at the podium. Leslie, can you give me just a second to get out my. So out of practice to chair meetings, turns out. I just wanna take a second, Leslie, and then I'll be ready. Alright, Leslie, thank you, you're up.
Good evening, Commission. Um, so just a couple things. Uh, at your last city commission meeting, I was, uh, on my way back from the governor's conference on tourism, and had to call in from my vehicle, and I don't know how much of it you heard, but I heard a lot. Um, don't need to go over what happened in the room. I appreciate coming to a final conclusion on the car show, so we're looking forward to having a wonderful car show. Um, this is the award that I brought back representing Livingston, Montana, and the film industry. This is our third award. It's actually really pretty, really beautiful. The, the industry here for film in this, in, uh, the city of Livingston is trials and tribulations over the years, but my tenures of working on finding locations, streets, um, Airbnbs, hotel rooms, uh, just many different things, creating so many jobs here and so much money spent into the economy here in Livingston. Also, I was, um, part of the integral part of getting rid of the film permit, which there were only two in the state of Montana, Bozeman and Livingston, um, that was prior administration. That was one of the best things we could have done. Uh, the film industry here has grown since then. We have the film, um, the film, uh, ranch down in Paradise Valley, and we also have, um, they have a, uh, holding facility for all their props and everything's right here in the town. And, um, you know, we, we have so many jobs and there's so much money that's pumped in here. I'm talking millions of dollars. In 2023 alone, the industry for the state of Montana was about a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. And even during COVID, it was, uh, a hundred and, what, fifty-nine million in economic revenue for, and over eight hundred and forty jobs in the state of Montana. And that was during COVID. And there was a lot of, uh, actors that couldn't fly here. We had production teams that were stuck here. Um, but in just this last year, you know, we, we really, um, had to jump through hoops. It was a writer's strike. And to be able to walk away with this award, um, award for our community is something incredibly special. And when I brought it in front of you, um, via the good old Zoom there, um, I didn't, I didn't really hear a mention from anybody. Um, and I would only hope that what I can bring forward to the commission to understand, as long as I have my job, I'm gonna continue to support this industry. It is for, it, a huge economic driver for the city of Livingston, not only jobs, our businesses, our restaurants, our hospitality. And, um, we're gonna continue to do this moving forward. Um, I, I also want to address in my last couple seconds that I felt, um, I was contacted by a city community member. Um, I had to get off the call as I was driving, and I heard a commissioner make, uh, direct comments about me, like I was supposed to go behind the leechers and have a fight, calling me out. I think that it was the most unprofessional thing that I've ever had a commissioner say to me as a chamber of commerce. The Chamber of Commerce in the city of Livingston has represented this community for one hundred and sixteen years. The visitor center has been here for one hundred and sixteen years, and I have been extremely proud to work hard day and night to represent this community to the best of my abilities, and to support every business, every economic development term that we can, and I will continue to do so as long as I decide to keep my job. And I only hope that this could be something that could be put behind us. I thought that I would have maybe heard him an apology, um, maybe support out of all of the industry that I currently support through the Chamber of Commerce. I'm hoping to put this behind us and move forward, and I appreciate each and every one of you for your volunteer hours that you do for the, um, commission, and I thank you for your time tonight and listening.
Thanks, Leslie. Um, I will just address that. I am, and I would encourage, you know, Chair Kale to speak in. I know she's here if she wants to, but Leslie, I know that you couldn't see that this was a totally packed room, and there were people standing at the last meeting, and I'm sure that the chair was just trying to keep the moving, the meeting going forward, because we generally don't respond to public comment. So, please know that we do appreciate the award. It just, I'm sure that she was trying to keep the, the meeting going. Um, Chair Kale, did you wanna add anything?
I think that you said it perfectly, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Noots. We had a very full house last time, and in general, we don't make comments, uh, during public comment. So, uh, thank you very much.
Alright, so, um, we're still on general public comment. I am feeling a little rusty, so thanks, everybody, with your patience with me tonight. Is there anyone else that wants to give comment on consent items or otherwise comment on items not on the agenda? I'm looking in the room first. See a bunch of staff in the room today. Hi, city staff. Anybody else? I'll look online. Anybody online? Uh, hello, Patricia Graybo, you're up.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to inform the commission that our Livingston downtown building owner and business association has voted to, one of the things that is an objective for us is to have the organizations in town uh, be more supportive of each other than perhaps we have been in the past. And, um, I, I was concerned about the comments of Commissioner Schwartz at the end of the meeting when he singled out the director of the Chamber of Commerce. I, um, I, my whole time of watching the city commission for twenty-five years, and I've never heard that kind of thing happen in a city commission before. So I, I, I wanted us to get to the point where we truly appreciate each other, appreciate the different organizations, appreciate the different points of view, because we are a nonpartisan. Uh, you have a nonpartisan commission, and, um, and, uh, I would, I would hope there would be an apology in order, but at any rate, um, and I, I don't mean to speak for the rights of the commissioners at all, but I just think an atmosphere of of, of kindness to each other is certainly in order for a city commission. So perhaps going forward, we will, we will learn from this and go on. So this is my comment. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online that would like to offer public comment? Not seeing anyone else. I'm gonna close, um, general public comment, uh. Commissioner Schwartz, out of respect for the fact that we all are individual commissioners, is there anything that you wanna say? I don't wanna turn this into a back and forth, but.
Um, I could reserve that for commissioner comments. I don't think it, this is proper time to public.
Thank you. Alright, then we'll move on. Um, consent items. There are six consent items on the agenda tonight, A through F. Are there any that commissioners want polled for discussion?
We'd poll F for discussion.
Okay, Lyons pulls F.
And I'll pull E.
And Schwartz pulls E. Any others? Um, do I have a motion on consent items A through D?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
Motion by Lyons.
Second that.
Second by Willich. Alright, uh, Commissioner Lyons, do you want to go first on consent item F?
Sure. Um, I just had a couple questions about the process. I did miss one consolidated land use board meeting. Uh, so the first question is, was there a discussion in that meeting of potential replacements for, in the vacancy?
Uh, there was not. We were notified of the vacancy, I believe, following the last land use board, um, meeting.
And then, I seem to recall, it's the planning board in the past, um, that we had internal discussions about who the planning board would recommend for vacancies. Um, and so with my now new knowledge that we haven't had that opportunity, am I remembering that correctly, that that's the way that, um, that we usually do it? And then, if so, why forego the opportunity to talk about it at the, within the board?
Uh, no, fantastic questions, Commissioner. Um, uh, you, you are correct. Uh, that, that had been the practice under both the former planning, um, board and zoning commission. Uh, when, when we created the consolidated land use board and adopted the new bylaws, um, we established at that point that the appointment of members was done, um, with the, a recommendation from the, the manager, but at the, the pleasure of the, of, of the commission itself. And so, uh, a role for the, the, the board members themselves was not, uh, contemplated in that process.
Okay, um, that's all. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Uh, Chair Kale? Is there anything you'd like to ask or clarification on with this one?
Um, the only thing that I would like to, uh, point out, Melissa, or, uh, Vice Chair Noots, is I think we missed the just vote for A through D.
Oh, you are so good. I prefaced all this with saying I was rusty, right?
Yeah.
You did, and I appreciate you being there tonight, so thank you for doing this for me.
I appreciate the team effort. Okay, so we will come back to A. Does that sound, or is that work for you if we come back to finish this?
Yes, absolutely. I just wanna make sure we didn't miss that, so absolutely, continue on.
Good job, Chair Kale.
Or we can come back and just approve the whole thing, A through.
Yeah, well, let's, should we finish up the conversation on, um, F? Or how do you guys, do you guys have a preference on how to proceed? Can we just finish with F and then we'll go back to A through D? Does that work? Okay, I'm getting nods and a neutral. Okay, okay, bunch of nods. Um, anything else on consent item F?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Okay, um, let's do first the motion through A, A through D, okay? And then we'll go to F and then we'll go to E.
True.
So for A through D, I have a motion from Lyons and a second by Willich. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so unanimous, motion passes. And now let's go to action item, or no, excuse me, consent item F. Um, so we got clarifying questions. There's no motion. Does someone wanna make a motion for consent item F?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, action item F.
Okay, there's a second, so motion by Schwartz and a second by Willich. Let's do a roll call vote for this one, please.
Would like to entertain any clarification.
Do you guys want, you guys are so good tonight. Do you wanna do any deliberation on this one before we vote? Anybody have thoughts?
Mine here.
But, uh, Chair Kale?
I'm good.
Mr. Lyons, anything? Okay, so now we'll do a roll call vote on consent F.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Noots.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Wilich.
For.
Motion passes, and now we're to consent item E. Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, yes, I, uh, told this just to, um, uh, make mention of Mr. Isley, who's in the audience here today, and, uh, welcome aboard, and thanks for applying and being part of, uh, um, a really, really important board, I think, so, um, I just wanted to acknowledge, um, acknowledge you and also Becky Moore for, for the volunteering. How are you?
Other commissioners? Chair Kale, anything? Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion for consent item E?
Make a motion to approve consent item E.
Motion by Schwartz.
I'll second that.
Second by Kale. Uh, any discussion? Anything? No one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion passes. Alright, so now we're to proclamations. Um, the first proclamation is a proclamation of the city, uh, city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, declaring May twelfth through eighteen, two thousand twenty-four is National Police Week in Livingston, Montana. Chair Kale.
Alright, give me just a moment, and I, I'm not in the room, I, so I can't see if we have any members of our police force or police department, um, in the room? And the chief can stand up if he feel, if he feels so inclined, as we, we like to ask folks to do that. Um, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Um, the proclamation of the, of the Livingston City Commission declaring May twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as National Police Week in the city of Livingston. Whereas the brave men and women of law enforcement across our nation dedicate their lives to safeguarding our communities, protecting our citizens, and upholding the principles of justice and equality. And whereas National Police Week provides an opportunity to honor the valor, dedication, and sacrifice of law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, and express our profound gratitude to those who continue to serve with unwavering commitment. And whereas President John F. Kennedy in nineteen sixty-two proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which falls in the week of National Police Week, acknowledging the indispensable role of law enforcement officers in preserving peace and order within our society. And whereas we acknowledge the vital role that law enforcement agencies play in preserving public safety, promoting community trust, and fostering collaboration between officers and the communities they serve. And whereas in the city of Livingston, fourteen dedicated officers served tirelessly, exemplifying the high standards of professionalism, integrity, and service to our community, and now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, chair, do hereby declare May twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four to be National Police Week in Livingston, Montana. Further, I call upon all citizens to observe this week by showing appreciation for the selfless dedication of our law enforcement officers, honoring the memory of those who have fallen, expressed, expressing gratitude to those who continue to serve and recognizing the contribution of the fourteen officers serving the city of Livingston, signed this day, uh, the seventh of May.
Chair Kale, is there anything you wanna add?
Um, I would just like to thank, uh, all of our men and women, uh, who work in our police department. Uh, we are, uh, very proud of you and still appreciate the work that you do for our community.
Thank you, and Mr. Gager?
I, I would also like to thank all of the officers for everything they do, and, uh, in addition to the fourteen officers, also like to thank our chief and assistant chief, uh, for all the, the tireless effort that they've put in over the last several weeks. Uh, they do a great job and, and it never stops, so thank you.
Other commissioners? Any more on offer? Commissioner Willich, do you wanna go first?
Sure, I'll go first. I wanna thank the, the police force for doing an extraordinary job for our wonderful city. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lyons, or Commissioner Lyons. Let's.
Yeah, thank you, and especially for, um, for, um, having the event go off down the, the fairgrounds smoothly and, um, and for the professionalism I saw through sheriff's office and, um, city police. So thank you again, a great job. How are you?
Yeah, I would add, um, your leadership is making its mark in the community of Livingston, and people are noticing not just this year, but last year before you were chief, so thank you for everything you do, and to all of your staff. Right, next on the agenda, another proclamation. Proclamation of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, declaring May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as National Kids to Parks Day by the National Parks Trust in Livingston, Montana. Chair Kale.
Thank you, and again, I don't know if we have any participants or anyone in the room for this proclamation this evening. Um, but if we, alright. Ask them to stand up if they'd like to.
He was up already, good job.
Alright, alright, I can't see you, I'm sorry. Okay, here we go, ready? Uh, proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Livingston. Whereas outdoor recreation and connection with nature play a vital role in the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of our youth, fostering love for the outdoors and installing a sense of stewardship for our national environment. And whereas Kids to Parks Day, organized by the National Park Trust, encourages children and families across the nation to explore and enjoy outdoor spaces, including parks, trails, and recreation areas, while prompting a healthy and active lifestyle. And whereas the city of Livingston, we are proud to maintain fourteen city parks and eight specifically designated to cater to the needs and enjoyment of children, all diligently maintained by our, by our city parks department. And whereas the Recreation Department of Livingston hosts well over thirty kids activities in our city parks every year, including some activities that run for several weeks. This provides children with numerous opportunities to learn, grow, and have fun in the great outdoors of our parks. And whereas the park department compromise, uh, comprised of four full-time dedicated employees, numerous parks seasonal, and the recreational department, staffed by three enthusiastic members, work tirelessly to ensure that our parks are safe, accessible, and vibrant spaces for children and families to enjoy. And whereas the Kids to Parks Day, we celebrate the efforts of our community to provide accessible and in, uh, inviting outdoor spaces for our youth, and we encourage all citizens to take children to our city parks, participate in activities, and foster a deep connection with nature. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the city of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, chair, do hereby declare May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four to be Kids in Parks Day in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge the community to join in celebrating this day by taking children to our city parks, participating in activities organized by the Recreation Department, and embracing the joy of outdoor exploration and adventure.
Yay, Parks. And Chair Kale, I'm sorry, also I, hiding in the second row was the Public Works Director Shannon's also here, who oversees parks. So, I'm sorry, Shannon, did you wanna stand up now and she can read it again for you?
That was a long one. I don't know if I'm reading that one again.
Did you wanna add anything?
Just thank you, uh, to our Parks and Rec Department and the folks, um, the Parks Department that does all the work on our parks and to the Public Works Department, so thank you all, and I hope we get our children out to play in the parks. We have some really wonderful ones.
Mr. Gager?
Yeah, I would echo those comments and thank the Public Works Department, and especially, uh, everyone in the, uh, Parks Division for everything that they do. I take my kids to the park every day I can, and so I know how awesome you guys are doing. I appreciate it. And, uh, extend my appreciation to our, our Recreation Director who, uh, you know, could be here this evening.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Other commissioners?
Uh, thanks for the great parks.
The commissioner that uses the parks very regularly?
Um, yeah, as a, as a regular user of the parks, my chief complaint lately would be the weather. So if there's something that you all could do about that, uh, that'd be great. Uh, but in, in seriousness, thank you.
Parks and Rec is only getting better and better. Keep up the great work.
Mm-hmm.
How are you?
I would add that I got some feedback from community members that they were really happy to meet you, Mike. Um, they like to see the people that are doing the work, so thanks for, thanks for coming out and meeting with the community last week. It meant a lot to them, and I think they're excited to talk to you more. Alright, next on the agenda, we're down to action items. Chair Kale, I wish you could see the room. It's more staff tonight and public, so there's some more, some more fun people coming up, I think, to listen to. So next on the agenda is, um, action item A, update from the city's water division. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Vice Chair Noots. The item before you is, uh, is not one of action, um, though you're welcome to ask questions. Uh, it is an update. We, as you, uh, may recall, uh, we do have a new water superintendent in the city of Livingston, so, uh, with, uh, with Ryan being about six months into the job, felt like a great time to, uh, formally introduce you all and, and have a little update from, uh, the Public Works Director Shannon, as well as our, uh, Water Superintendent Ryan. So I'll turn it over to Greg to kick us off here.
Good evening, commissioners. I had the absolute pleasure of working with Shannon, Ryan, and Chuck on this presentation over the last few weeks. I learned a ton about our city's water system and the work that goes into maintaining it. Um, so just, uh, you have the presentation, Grant?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you have questions about water, these are the gaps.
I will have all the questions.
And so, uh, Grant, if you'll go to the, make a slide there. Real quick, we're gonna go over the water test results for the, uh, PFAS, and then the annual drinking water report. Do a full system overview for the water system in the city, and then talk a little bit about the importance of the water service line questionnaire. So I will turn it over to the professionals.
Right. So this is gonna be a team effort. Um, first of all, I'm grateful tonight to have members of the Public Works team present. And I wanna, before I get into anything, I wanna introduce you to the team. So, you've already seen Mike Skaggs, our park superintendent. Um, Adam Ballou is our new project manager, our newest public works hire, so very excited to have him on the team. Uh, Grant introduced Ryan Townsend, our water superintendent, and this is Chuck Dilly, our utility to, um, kinda service, water service, uh, staff member. So Ryan and Chuck and myself are all certified water operators with the state of Montana. And we're very happy to present on our water system for you tonight, and then that'll segue into more of, uh, uh, water restrictions and kinda formalizing a policy on that, um, on the next presentation. So, uh, there will be time for Q and A afterwards. Bear with us, uh, this is unrehearsed, but we live this and work in it every day, so I guess without further ado, we'll get started. So you guys wanna step up to the podium with me?
Absolutely.
Alright, so, um, we'll get started. Um, so providing safe drinking water is our utmost responsibility for the residents of Livingston, and, um, we're very happy to report that, um, our system, we, um, we received some sample bottles from the EPA uh, last May, and we sampled, uh, all six of our wells in June, and then again in October. And we got those test results back, and our system is clean of PFASs. So we're, we're pretty famous for acronyms in public work, so uh, PFAS, PFASs really is per and polyfluorinated substances. Um, I don't wanna get into the science and chemistry of it tonight, but I will say that there, the EPA has a, a wonderful fact sheet, so if you wanna Google that, um, it gives a lot of great information about it, but the EPA really is focusing, um, six of those PFAS um, derivatives. Um, while there's no regulation currently, they have sampled almost every municipal water source nationwide and are kind of seeing what sort of results uh, are out there. So there are other municipalities in Montana that have actually tested positive, um, for that, but I'm happy to say that, that Livingston's water is, is safe from that. So I don't know if you guys wanna add anything?
Um, nothing really would keep us, no.
Okay.
That's pretty straightforward.
Um, I will say, this is not a regulated, uh, substance for drinking water yet, but I would say that the EPA is working on that, and then once the EPA establishes, um, uh, you know, a limit for it, it'll get passed down to the state of Montana through the DEQ and, and. Um, uh, you know, a limit for it, it'll get passed down to the state of Montana through the DEQ and and probably certain municipalities will have to start testing for it on a on a monthly basis. So. Um, our president allocated, knowing that this was going to be an issue based on some of the initial results, there there is nine billion dollars worth of money um available for municipalities across the country to help address this, so. All right, and then that really segues into our annual consumer um confidence report. So Chuck and Ryan take numerous samples every month, uh, send them to energy labs um for every kind of known chemical. Um, because we're in a superfund site, we actually have some additional. Testing related to that that we do on a monthly basis. And um I'm happy to report that all of our samples last year um were within compliance of of what DEQ mandates. But we did have one violation through our uh sanitary survey. Um, Carl has been doing it, I think, with Chuck for at least two iterations now, and he visited our swimming pool this this last summer and found that we didn't have proper back backflow prevention. Uh, at the swimming pool. Uh, thanks to Mike and his team and Ryan and his team, we we got that fixed this past uh March. And we'll be ready to go for the pool season here later this month.
I don't want to be the rick of that.
So DEQ. Requires us to to post this, so there is a copy uh of this on our city website under the Public Works Water tab. And then there'll be a hard copy posted at City Hall, so um we want to be open and transparent with our testing, and this is the document that allows that to happen.
And and our P pass results are linked to that too, right?
All right, so on to the next slide. So this is what gives Ryan and Chuck and I gray hairs. Um, we have, I would say. For a town of our size, we have a very extensive water distribution system. Um, we have six groundwater wells uh located. Uh, all upstream of the the plume. Um. We have three reservoirs. The we have a ninety thousand for our high-pressure district. We have a two million. We have a one million. And then we have three booster stations. So we have a booster station that. Boost water for fire flow protection out to PFL, and then we have a booster. That sends water from the one million up to the two million, and then from the two million up to the ninety thousand. In addition to that, we have about seventy miles of water mains um scattered throughout town. Um. Do you notice we've had a lot of construction this past fall and through the winter and hopefully finishing up this spring, but we've. Now have water mains extended into the Park County Fairgrounds, Sun Mountain Lumber area. Out to the city limits on Love's Lane, and then a couple of projects over in the Green Acres. Um, Lama Lane area, so uh we are adding, and and then with the North Town project, we'll have more. Infrastructure uh for that development as well, so uh rather extensive. Water system we have.
Yeah.
So here's where Chuck really, he um he keeps a very close eye. Um, we monitor our. Our six wells seven days a week. And um, just wanted to show this slide. This is this is our pumping capacity for each of our six wells. Um. During the winter months, typically we have three to four wells running, and we kind of. Alternate between those, so we're not running them too much. Uh, each one of these wells does have a water right uh associated with it, so there is a maximum amount of water you can take out of the aquifer. But in July, um, when we see sprinkler systems at kind of their peak and tourists are in visiting Livingston and. Uh, that's third week of July is typically our peak demand all the way through August. Um, this is the maximum amount when we're running all six of our wells is about thirty-one hundred um gallons per minute. For the next slide. Awesome. This one, okay, so. This is. A little precursor to our second presentation. Um. So a little idea, I mean, I think we all, all of us that have lived here prior to two thousand eighteen nineteen know that Livingston's growing and changing. Um, so wanted to put up a couple of slides kind of prior to the two thousand twenty pandemic and and show show the. Commission, you know, what our annual uh. Gallons of water pump per year were, and so we were back around six hundred and sixteen. Million five eighty-four in and two thousand nineteen. I don't recall if those were dry or wet years, um, but then we jump up to. Twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and you see quite a difference. And because of this really is why we're gonna have the second presentation and and start talking about water restrictions. Um. We do have a finite. Capacity on what we can pump per minute, and we have a finite uh storage capability, so. Um. Will maybe refer back to these in our second presentation, but. Pretty significant um when you're talking hundreds of millions of gallons of water um. In a twelve-month period.
And I'd like to add to um that. From in two thousand twenty-one, the reason why those numbers are not up there, we did update all of our meters at our wells. Uh, we got rid of that outdated. Uh, more of an impeller style that doesn't read quite as accurately and went to a digital, so it's hard to know. If the numbers represented in two thousand eighteen and twenty nineteen actually should be, could possibly be higher. Uh, so so with that being said, so I think the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three uh are actually quite accurate. Based on the new new technologies we've incorporated at our wellhouses.
Makes sense. So. Um. This is how we monitor our system, and both Chuck and Ryan. Have this capability on their iPhones, on laptops that they take at home, so we can monitor. The well levels, which pumps are running twenty-four hours a day, seven or three hundred sixty-five days a year. Um. So this is this is key to our telemetry and and uh. Basically, day-to-day operation, so. You can see our six wells down at the bottom. You can see kind of the uh hydraulics and the piping of of our system is set up, so. Very, very important that this stays functional, and we just have to do a shout out to Erica Hoffman. Um, she. Does amazing things to make sure this this is a standalone computer at Public Works. It's not attached to our network, and we need to make sure that it. Functions properly all the time.
Can I just ask a quick question? So. We're just seeing a stat like a a still image on a screen, but you're saying that this is like. I'm assuming real-time live updates that that these folks can see wherever they are, whenever they are. So it doesn't always look this way. That we're seeing right now.
Constant levels of changing, pumps are kicking on at different times, and then we we can manually manipulate what we need to. During those times, so if we do run into an issue. Therefore, we can. For lack of better words, override a system, turn more pumps on, but for the most part, everything's automatic and it just. These are these live update like where the levels you'll see on the where the reservoirs are.
Mm-hmm.
Those are constantly changing. They constantly change throughout the day, evening, all the times. Yeah.
Thank you.
And in this screenshot, we have two wells running, so the green on the Billman Well and the B Street Well, those are running, the other four are off. And this is probably a good um slide to just go over how our system functions, so. All six of the wells basically are pumping into the distribution system, so you know, if if you if we have demand in our residential homes or our commercial businesses. If they're running water. They're gonna get a supply from the wells initially. Any excess water goes up to the one million reservoir. And then we have to pump from the one million up to the two million, and then the two million up to the ninety thousand, so. Um, in a perfect world, our one million reservoir and our two million would be flip-flopped. Um, the one million. Reservoir serves about seventy percent of our town, whereas the two million's about thirty percent, and then. About thirty-five homes is what's on the ninety thousand, but um. I guess the moral of the story is when our wells are running, it they only pump to the one million, and you have to pump to fill up the two million off of the one.
Pump it twice, basically.
Yeah. Now. For fire protection, uh, I think one of the best projects we did back in two thousand fifteen is we do have a pressure-reducing valve that connects the two million system to the one million, so. Um, seventy percent of our town has at least three, could have three million gallons of storage uh in the case of a a fire event.
Which could also be manually turned on, um, or when the one million reaches a certain low point is when it kicks that PRB on, and basically, like what Shannon said, combines the two reservoirs.
Uh, can I ask you a question? So the. The reason for the different elevations of these reservoirs, it just corresponds with the different elevations of. Water needs in in the town. Is that correct? So you said the ninety thousand serves thirty-five. Homes. It's because there's there are only about thirty-five homes at that elevation in town. They're low, right below between one million or the two million of the.
Yep, so that that serves um like Blue Heron, um Ridgeway, Goat Mountain, background.
So the reason that we have to be pumping water up is because we don't live on a flat in a flat space, so you have to serve those different elevations with different elevations of water.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just I'm I I learned by like saying it, so I had this.
We all.
So you know, when the when the town was created, you know, the night the one million served and and. Provided adequate storage for this this part of town.
Yeah.
As the town grew to the west, the two million was put in to kind of serve that area near the cemetery and Ridgeview Trails on Discovery Vista, that area.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Right. So some of the. I guess challenging news. Um. While our system is very complicated, it's not a spring chicken. Um. So I wanted to put this slide up um just to illustrate. All the red lines are six-inch water mains, and they're uh in excess of seventy years of age, so they're. Uh, at or exceeding their useful life um for cast iron or ductile iron pipe. And then the purple lines are actually the four-inch lines that serve our town, and they are in excess of a hundred years old. So. Our. Design standards require any new water main that goes in the ground, and DEQ actually has the same standard is has to be an eight-inch line, so. Um. When you start looking at the area of a four-inch. Water main to an eight-inch, it is, you know. Times this time, it's. Double the radius for the area, so you can move a lot a lot more water in an eight-inch line than you can for. So. Um. When we did the Water Master Plan back in uh two thousand twenty, uh. We have a lot of money in capital improvement projects to to replace this, and it is approaching fifty million dollars. Um, we're looking at about thirty-six million dollars to replace all the six-inch water mains and about thirteen point five to replace the four-inch.
Shane, what do the other colors mean?
Uh, the uh blue are eight-inch, and then we go all the way up to twelve and twenty-four up near our reservoir, so. So you'd have.
So the dark.
Four, six.
Or the light blue is eight inches.
Dark blue would be twelve.
The light blue is gonna be eight-inch. And then the dark blue is gonna be twelve-inch.
And what's the green?
The green is ten-inch.
Thanks.
All right, next slide. So um, because of. The extent of foreign section mains and their age, um. It's sad to say that about thirty percent of the water we pump is actually lost back into the ground due to to several factors. Um. Most significantly, it's it's the leakage from the old pipes. Um. Ryan and his team, we, you know, in order to keep our lines flushed and clean, we flush hydrants twice a year. Um, when you have over four hundred hydrants and you flush them for five to ten minutes at a hundred PSI, you're. Probably flushing three to four thousand gallons of water per hydrant, so. Um, that is, we kind of view that as unaccounted-for water. Um, certainly the Fire Department and Rural Fire, they have a training facility. Um, they're based out of this location, and at C Street, they they fill. Uh, their apparatuses and do trainings off our hydrant, so um that's common. Uh, another one would be just uh old leaking service lines um from the main to the meter in the house or in people's yards. We see a lot of older homes uh with galvanized water service lines, uh even even the copper. Service lines in some of our hotter soils or um, you know, get pinhole leaks and things of that nature, and it's prior to the meter, so it's. We we label that as unaccounted-for water, and then, you know, we're in Old Town, we're um the railroad, and um. Just have to be honest, there's probably some locations out there where people are connected to the city main, and there's not a meter connection to it.
Where's this one?
That was on um Hundred Block, South Yellowstone Street.
Oh, south.
Yeah, that just like goes a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we got the.
Two weeks ago or so, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Did you bring in any broken pipes for us, Silicon?
Did not bring those in. No, it was a little big hole in there.
And that's good. That stuff is all cast on, right?
It is.
And all that, yeah, that stuff. You know, even sewer pipe, just the friction with whatever sand could be in there just wears.
I think one telltale sign, and this wasn't a requirement back, you know, seventy years ago, um, but you know, you could see this water main was not bedded with gravel. It was just direct buried. Um. You look at the seismic activity that we have in this area, ground shifts, and our pressures are very unforgiving. I mean, we're in that ninety to over a hundred. So um, as this, the system gets older and aged and and, you know, it does shift, and you have large river rocks and things are up against the pipe. Um, it's just a matter of time for you have a catastrophic failure like this.
And to put that into perspective, that's a six-inch water main. Um, that break. What what's visible uh was about twenty inches wide by six inch. I mean, that's a good amount of water. We actually had to follow a crack um on both sides. And take a big about eight-foot section out of that pipe, and as we were digging that out, we found more holes in the main that were about quarter size.
Yeah.
That had clearly been leaking uh for a long, long time. And with the soils that we have, especially on that south side of town being river rock, it just sucks up the water. It doesn't show itself um until the ground's fully saturated. Yep, and then we have a lot of on that south side as well. We have a lot of concrete streets. Which keeps that water from coming out, so I mean, who knows how long. That those holes were leaking and that crack was leaking, and then it finally decided to give up and.
Now I keep waiting for a sinkhole here or there.
Yeah.
To that end, how do you identify major leaks?
Well, um, some of it is sound. Um, you can hear the vibration going through the pipes. Sometimes we'll get phone calls from citizens. The resident saying their their meter sounds weird or their pipes are vibrating. Um, a lot of times, though, it's west spots in the road. Yep, it's a good one.
LPD Wayne and his group helped us with that a lot. You know, they're they have people out patrolling, and you know, if they notice. Something, they'll call dispatch and um dispatch will call the the Water Department staff that's on call, and they'll go take a look at it, and. You know, in this case, it was pretty obvious. There was quite a bit of water bubbling up underneath the concrete street.
So is that how it happened in our neighborhood, Chuck? Like when, so I remember the bridge had all that water, but it was it was just all of a sudden. There was water in the streets?
Yep, that's exactly. There was a small little area. Somebody had called in because there. But then by the time I had actually got there, it had fully broken, and then it was actually bubbling. It had just seeped to the top, I think, when that person had called in.
Mm-hmm.
That was actually a neighbor of mine that called it in. And he had noticed it for a day or so. Um, just what looked like possibly rainwater. And he had noticed it for a day or so, um, just what looked like possibly rainwater. Hadn't rained for a while or whatever, but then by the time. Got that call and whatever he had called back. And it had actually started bubbling up and out of the ground.
And then you, so you guys just like start digging and you don't know what you're gonna find and then you just have to keep digging and following till it's not broken anymore? Is that basically what you're?
Yep.
That sounds intense.
Process and it's uh where the water comes out of the road is now, it doesn't, it's that's not the truth to where the leak is, it finds the path of least resistance.
Yep.
Uh, we've had to, we've had, we've found water coming out of cracks. Thought, okay, we're gonna dig a, you know, five foot, five, ten foot hole here. And turned into a thirty foot hole because we had to trace the mains back to find to find the leak, yeah.
Like a leaky roof, same same thing.
Well, you can see a leaky roof.
Well, it it kept the water coming in over here, but it's dripping in over here, so.
Yeah.
I've tore up every roof looking for leaks like that, man.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, another invective mission lines, you're asking um loss of pressure. Water pressure, that's a big indicator as well. So. You know, making your coffee, having a shower in the morning, everything's fine at lunch. You have nothing come out of your faucet. May not see the water coming out of the ground, but there's like a chance that something's happened.
So in that sense, you do have. Or at least by that measure, like a pretty good. Um. Understanding what's going on because we've got, you know, high density of re- residences all around town, so they're gonna report that.
Mm hmm.
Um. It, yeah, I got, I'm I'm just thinking about, you know, trying to spot these leaks and hundred year old pipes. And how how tricky that is when they're buried underground, um, at least that one is something that. Can we tell you that there's a problem without? Um, needing to dig or see water coming up because. Yeah, I don't know, it sounds like a really challenging.
Now, when there's a hole in a pipe this size, it's pretty, you're gonna hear that pretty quick.
But you might not notice it if it's like a quarter sized hole.
Absolutely.
So you probably have hundreds or thousands of those throughout the system that are constantly losing water and. You won't find them until they're maybe that big of a hole.
Yep, and some run through backyard and stuff of multiple residences, one house I was working on and went down basement, I could hear water. Show off the. Um. A house water and still running, the pipe was broken between the the main and the house. And I was going through somebody's backyard, so.
Fascinating.
Mm hmm.
And we should have brought one in, we have this little gauge. It shows you um pinhole up to about a quarter inch hole. And it tell you within a day, a month, a year, how much water loss equates out of that at a certain PSI and it's. Pretty amazing.
Yeah, it is.
How much water can be lost at above a quarter inch hole.
Maybe you'll have to get on the agenda again.
I do think, I mean. Because of that, I think it's a good opportunity to educate our residents, um, you know, a running toilet. Can surprisingly.
Yeah.
Go through a lot of water.
Yeah.
Ripping faucet, anything like that, no.
Um. Is there a way to estimate? So you uh earlier on in in the slides. Um. You talked about uh how much water we are going through each year, is there a way, is there a way to estimate? Oh, I guess you said thirty, up to thirty percent?
Thirty percent.
Um. While we're on this topic, I did have a question, um. About the the total. Uh, pumping capacity of thirty ones and hundred gallons per minute.
Mm hmm.
How how does that compare to? Our water rights? Like what, how much more water do we have access to? Via our water rights?
Mm hmm.
Does the city own those water rights?
We do.
And then are there any way like, you know, we're we we're we're talking about, we're the the commission's doing about development all the time, right? And we hear numbers of 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 ten thousand people in our city, that is an inevitability. Um. Are we close to coming up to the capacity of those water rights? And if so. Are there possibilities for? Expanding those rights or are conservation our only route to allowing for uh facilitating more development?
So let's.
There's a lot of questions.
So I'll I'll say. We're very fortunate for our community to to be on the aquifer that we are. Um, we do have. Adequate water rights for expansion, um, we're not gonna be as challenged as some of the municipalities in Gallatin County. Um, so we do have, and we actually have a water reservation from when the we were treating water out of the Yellowstone. Uh, that has now been um. Basically transferred into the lagoon. So um it's obviously gonna take some attorneys to draft the language, but but to to be able to drill a new well for Livingston is not gonna be that. Big of a challenge from a water right perspective. Um. For the last five years, I've had a a new a well number seven in our in a capital improvement sheet and you know. Every year that we move forward, it's gonna get more expensive, but right now to just put in a new well, uh municipal well, it's gonna be in one point five million dollars.
Thank you. Um. I think I think you've covered um my questions. I think. You know, we were were. Kind of tasked with being prudent with our with our public resources and I'm thinking about. The the difference in costs to the taxpayers. Of. You know, fixing the system and conserving up to thirty percent of the the losses that way. Um, and then. Conservation, which uh you know, is not a cost to the city, but I guess it's a cost to the consumers. Um, and then expansion, so that those are kind of like the three options that I see. Um, am I missing any?
No.
Okay. Uh, thanks.
Mm hmm. So I I guess while we're on this topic, I just want to give kudos to the department, um. You know, Ryan and his department, we have someone on call every day of the year, these guys and. Uh, staff go out at all night, all times of the night and all weather conditions and we've had water main breaks when it was forty below zero. And our equipment was freezing up because the hydraulics couldn't work, so um. Our goal is when we have a water main break is to get the water back on to our residents as quickly as possible and um. You know, Ryan and his team do a great job, um, in this case with Yellowstone Street. With with those old mains, we had to shut the water off at Park Street all the way to Geyser, so we we put. You know, numerous blocks of off of water just to be able to go in and do that repair safely. Alright, so. I alluded to this one earlier, um. It's not cheap to do a water main replacement project, so um. I think the last significant project we did was six and seventh street and that was about one point three million for, you know, just six blocks of. A four inch upsizing to eight inch and then that was no street kind of restoration, that was.
Right, we just gone.
Matching the trenches and. Doing that work, so.
Better, better.
Yeah. So I think that one uh kind of leads us into the last reminder, um. We appreciate all the residents that have provided us um. Information on their water service line, um. In a neat opportunity we have between now and Oc- October sixteenth, uh, we are mandated by. Uh, Montana DEQ to provide them um. Over four thousand residential customer and about close to five hundred commercial customer information. And I think we're sitting on about eight hundred right now, so we need, we need uh people to to participate in that questionnaire either online. Or call Faith at Public Works and um. And if if people need help, um, she can schedule Chuck to come out and and do a house visit and be able to pick up that information. Um. But.
Yeah, that's it's really important that the the residents in the community help us with this. Uh, we're talking about the costs to repair these mains. Information that we don't have, we're required to put as unknown in the spreadsheet. And then we're held to a percentage each year of unknowns, which could be considered, you know, DQ would consider it um. Pipes that we have to replace. On our dime, so that's in a way back on the taxpayers. Um, to to have us dig up the street. Inspect it, if it's copper or plastic, oh, we just wasted our time. If it's a galvanized pipe, then we can repair it and all is good, but. But yeah, lack of cooperation can actually result in.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And more cost down the line.
So.
It's good to point that out, yeah, really make that.
So you're saying not doing it raises taxes, basically, I mean.
I don't know if I'd say say that.
Costs more money, I mean, it's gonna be.
I mean, it would, it would have to add to our operating costs, I'm not sure whether that comes, you know, taxes or. You know, enterprise funds, but.
It'll cost.
It'll cost.
Residents, yeah, in some way, that's good for them to know all this, no?
So this, you know, this lead copper inventory is similar to the what the EPA is doing with the PFAS stuff. Um, the state of Montana just wants to have a like a good understanding of how many leaded lead service lines are out there. Um, I do anticipate there being, you know, a funding available to help that, um, and. Just in the time I've been here and, you know, we've had a few water superintendents that have retired with. Twenty five to thirty plus years experience. Given, you know, the age of our infrastructure and the and, you know, its inception with the railroad. Uh, we do not have a lot of leaded service lines. Uh, which is good, uh, there are some other communities in Montana that are really um. Are gonna have some big challenges and they're mandated to replace X amount of those on an annual basis.
Um, quick question. Chuck, about how long does it take you? I know people might be nervous to have a city employee come in their house and help keep their bills lower, but like how long realistically? Does it actually take you when you go help somebody check?
To do one of these?
Yeah.
Let service, um, if. Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, yeah, you're getting out.
Yep.
Ten minute tops, okay.
And that's if you have crawl space.
Okay, that's good to know, so people like should not feel nervous about asking for help, because it only takes you ten minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll continue to remind people via social media, I know Greg's and I've been very nice of. Uh, including those in the city managers, you know, monthly newsletter, um, probably get some help from uh the enterprise, but. Um. We 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 need to meet that October sixteenth goal, uh, we did apply for some uh. Help, so um water environmental technologies i- is gonna be getting on board with us and and helping us navigate. Through that process, but um the more residents we can have participated in it before it gets busy in the summertime. Um, it's much appreciated.
With the, just one more question, when we did. Six and seven street water main, did we find any? Lead service and and any of those, do you remember?
We did not, uh, and actually all of those in that project were were marked, knowing that this.
Yeah, because I'm part of that, man, because I know mine's galvanized. So I'm just curious, you know, if there was a percentage of lead service through there, but.
So. We found some leaded goosenecks, but a a gooseneck does not meet the definition of a true leaded service line, yeah.
Okay. So I, I think what we'll do, since we do have public here, that's probably interest, is give you guys a break, since you've been standing here, like, attention. Give the public a chance to comment, ask questions, but it's not gonna be dialogue between the public and staff. The public will ask their questions, commissioners can keep track, and then we can ask our any additional questions we have at the end. Just like go through the Mr. Gager process, does that work for you? You comfortable with that? Okay. So then you guys can like take a break. And not be put on the spot and know that the questions will be coming back to you in a minute, does that work?
That works.
You did too, okay, alright, so public. Um, that was a lot of fun information and now's a good time to bring your questions or comments about what we just learned. If you come up to the podium, we'll just do four minutes like always.
Let me give some two fifteen list, Clark, I have a question for Shannon, um, the slide number two, it said um clinic and. Clarence, isn't that kind of redundant, aren't they across the street from each other? And there's two wells across the street from each other at that point at the end of South Tim.
Okay.
That's my question.
Anything else, Lindy?
Um, I was gonna comment on Liam's um commenting on the weather. You know, and I just wanted to remind him that this is the month of May, it may rain, it may snow, it may not.
Well done.
Thank. Thank you for allowing me to pun issue everybody.
It's become expected that you will offer us some puns if.
I will never let you down.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, not in the room, how about online? Don't take the last of que- lack of questions. As an insult to the most. One of the most interesting presentations of all time. Yes, Angela, hello, hi Angela.
Hello. Angela Devani, four twenty three South F. I'm curious what percentage of residents have done the online. Water assessment thing, um, to be honest, I attempted to do it. Quite some time ago when the request first came out and I took pictures on my phone and tried to upload them and it told me my file size was too big. Um, I don't know, I got a couple of different errors, so I just got frustrated and was like, eh, I'll come back to it. Um, so I'm. Can't imagine that I'm the only person who had that issue, and so. Is it possible for that? File size to be bigger or other formats, I'm trying to remember the format that it would accept, um. Cause I think my phone. I don't know, created JPG or I don't remember, um, so anyway, those are my. Questions about that assessment. Thanks.
Thanks, Angela, that's really good feedback. Um, anybody else online? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna close up public comment. Commissioners, also with these questions, if that works for you and then we can. Have a round, um, Chair Kale, I see you too and. We'll come to you too, okay, alright, so team water. Um. I guess Mr. Gager, you'll know who to direct it to, the first question was about well redundancy. If you wanna.
Uh, yeah, it's my understanding and Ryan, please hop on up and correct me when I get this wrong, but it's my understanding that Clarence. Is actually closer down to I ninety in like the bird streets, is that? Um, correct there.
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Then the owl, the owl can see you too and that way people online.
Oh, you, um, no, that's a great question, Wendy, so uh our Clarence Street well is now. Uh, what used to be Clarence Street, now it's River Drive.
Yeah.
Um, and it's right where the old water plant used to be, uh, the clinic well is actually by what is now the Kendall Apartments. So was that maybe the third clinic at one point in time in town? The one you're thinking of is actually a sewer lift station, which is where Mary Pleasance apartment complex is, which was also the old clinic.
Oh.
And that is.
Livingston Clinic versus Park Clinic.
Yes, and that is named the clinic lift station, so it, so clinics used a few different times, uh, and in our our naming.
Thank you.
Uh, the well you're referring to, um, that is Warner, well, that used to be Warner Street, yep. And now it is in Blizzard.
I knew I'd get it wrong.
You're welcome.
Hope I'm the right person. Um, the next question was from Angela and it was about act like somebody who actually tried to do it and had issues with the process.
Yeah, so I, you know, it, we've got about thirty three hundred residential units and if we've heard from eight hundred, that means we've heard from about a quarter of them. And I'm really embarrassed to say that I don't directly know the number to Public Works because I keep it on my wall next to my phone, so I don't have to remember that number. But perhaps you could remind us of the Public Works number that somebody could call if they would want Chuck's help. It's two, two, two.
Five, six, six, seven.
There you go.
Two, two, two.
Five, six, six, seven.
Five, six, six, seven, okay, so Angela can just call that number. Not worry about. The file size, Chuck will come over and in ten minutes or less, it's done.
I believe so.
Okay.
And I think in in some cases, um, so there is a.
Shannon, do you mind coming up? So folks near, thank you so much, appreciate that.
So absolutely, call the Public Works number, um, but I know in some cases I've heard, um, residents have called Faith. And actually just emailed her and she's been able to dow- upload that information into the to the spreadsheet that we're generating, so.
So call the number or just email Faith your images.
Yep.
How do people email Faith?
Uh. F Kinick, K I N N I C K at Livingston, Montana, all spelled out, dot org.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple of options, cool. Alright, so commissioners, um, I'm sure there's a long list of awesome feedback and questions. Who would like to begin? Oh, we've just begun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll go.
Yeah, Commissioner Lance.
Uh, absolutely fascinating. Uh, I don't know if it's the, the, the nerd in me that's fascinated by it, but. I've, I've learned a tremendous amount. Uh, I would say that, um, some takeaways for me are. I'm nervous about our aging infrastructure and about the, both the loss of the water. And also the wasted energy and moving the water around the system that, that we're not, that we're not utilizing. Um, and, uh, I'm just gonna kind of lay out again, I see three kind of. Ways that we're going to address the problem going forward, so it's gonna be updating the system, potentially expanding the system. And then potentially implementing conservation. So I see those as like, three fixes to the problem that you've presented to us. Um, I think it'll be up to us, uh, you know, eventually to determine how we're gonna allocate resources. Uh, on those three different options, um, but, you know, it's, it's scary to see how expensive. Some of those options are, um, but. That's, you know, when we have such, we, when we have this aging infrastructure. And our options might be to just let that water can continue to be wasted. And that energy can continue to be wasted to, to move it around the system, um, that. That makes that option of doing nothing seem, uh, not particularly attractive to me, so. Um, thank you for, for, for teaching us. I think, um, I, I learned a lot and it's fascinating, so thank you.
Other commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner.
Um, Mr. Gagers to Shannon, um, do we have a, uh. Kind of strategic plan for replacing our, our four-inch mains and, and, and stuff, like X amount of miles per year or. Kind of like we started, you know, with Six and Seventh Street, Seventh Street was notorious, we're breaking every. And feet, I swear. Just out of curiosity, I know, you know, in my lifetime, we're not gonna get it all done, but.
That, that is a, a conversation that Shannon, uh, Paige Federhoff, the finance director, and I have, uh, annually. And, um, for a number of years, uh, the city of Livingston's, um, rates were not sufficient to enable. Um, you know, some of the access to capital, whether it's revolving loan funds or bonding, um, that would really facilitate. Large-scale replacements. Uh, we are kind of coming out of that area into a, a different spot. And, um, yes, that is something that we are actively looking at, because, um, you know, that, uh. That break we had on Yellowstone was, was very close to my house. I got to watch the guys, uh, working for a good portion of that day before I left. And, um, yeah, it's, it's one we know that exists.
Anything else?
Um, no, because it's great work. To everybody, I mean, it's incredible. And it is fascinating. I, I love public works. I love that stuff. I yield.
Commissioner Roch, anything?
I think my fellow commissioners said it best, but, uh, thank you, good presentation. Pretty eye-opening, so appreciate it.
Uh, Chair Kale?
Well, I think you all in the room have asked all the, all the great questions, so thank you for that. And thank you, uh, to the team for, um, a great presentation. It was very interesting.
All right. Um. I have a couple of questions. So for the cost of the mains, did you say that did or did not include the cost of streets? When they replace mains?
Uh, I did not.
Yeah, I believe the number did not include any street repair.
Okay, that would be interesting if we ever have that information, to hear the total cost, since realistically, we're not replacing mains without streets. Um, right, and curb and gutter, yeah. Um, and then I have a question about that, whatever you call that app. I don't know what you call it, you name for it? Pipes and reservoirs?
Oh, that's our.
What system?
Skater. System control and diagnostic, something?
So does that show these folks when there's like a problem in the system? Is there like? Cause they're watching it all the time. So like, if there's a problem, can they see it there first before they see?
It will.
Do you wanna come up? Sort of like the chair to be able to hear too and everybody online.
Central tower too, that one forward and what that can do. In addition to that.
So as far as your question, um. With the way those are, a lot of that stuff is automatic and we can manually manipulate. But what will happen is if there, if there is a certain thing, like say a low level on a reservoir.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That will actually set an alarm, and then that will call, it goes down through a chain. Ryan is one of them, gets called first. If for any reason he was not able to get to the phone. It will go then to the next person, which myself, and then on down the list, and then it will recall. But we're always, it's twenty-four, seven, so if there's any, if there's a power outage, you name it. Those things, there, there will be an alert system, and then it'll automatically call us. So like, if you're. Which has happened quite a few times. So if you're getting really good night's sleep. And something goes, you know, we, tonight, we're having high winds, you name it, there's power outages. Um, if that does affect one of our wells, that will. End up calling us, and if we don't see it, say beforehand, like, oh, look, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It will, it'll notify us by, um, phone recognition.
So it's not so much like if a pipe is leaking, it has to be like a significant thing that will trigger a system?
Right, now would just be, cause that skater system that, that slide was. That was a show in like our, that was showing our pumps, reservoirs, lift stations, stuff like that. Um, as far as like a pipe break, that's more going to be visual and or. Like some of the stuff we discussed earlier with, you know, loss of pressures, somebody. From the public calling in, or we get to see it, or something like that. And that is.
Thank you.
That is, uh, there is one other thing Shannon asked me to, if you.
No, no.
Um, just, I might, yeah, okay. But, uh, that would be something with that, uh, central tower that would monitor our, um. Meters, it would basically take over meter reading, like I do once a month, meter reading, stuff like that. But with that central tower, that can start incorporating to where we could actually monitor. Some of the system, we, we could, we would be able to have pressure sensors in various areas. And those could be monitored, um, as well as, you know, well, different flows and whatever. And then you could set parameters within that system, and it would all be read off of and constantly feeding back to. Uh, a computer to where then you could set up alerts, and that would, so that. That could be huge for us, and then, then we could start picking up. You know, they would pick away at a little bit more than what we can just see with our wells and lift stations and reservoirs.
I'm just, the, the meter technology that, um, so in the time Chuck's been here.
What's the time Chuck's been here?
Four years. So he's replaced a lot of meters in four years. I think we're up at around twelve hundred new I Pearl meters, so.
Mine.
Any new builds, um, failed meters, so the old brass, um, uh, meters from census. We're trying, we're, we're systematically replacing those with new technology. And this, this central tower that the commission approved in our current water budget from a capital project, uh, in our current fiscal year. We're working with the county, um, up where the, uh, oh, the nine-one-one radio tower is. On the Big Hill, uh, we'll have, what, basically have, um, infrastructure there that will take away Chuck. Going ha- out once a month for a day and a half or so to individually read all the meters in town. It'll, it'll be able to pick up almost all the residents in town, and then with that, we can. The goal would be for residents to be able to log into a system that they can monitor, and they can set their own alarms for high usage or low pressure drop. So with that central tower, we could put, uh, infrastructure out at the hospital, down at Sunmount Lumber, out at, uh. Um, you know, PFL, and we can measure temperature, pH of the water, pressure drops and all that. So it really, it's exciting, um, news moving forward, but it starts with the central tower, and then we can build off of that.
Cool.
Yeah.
I would say the things I would add. Plus one to what everybody else said, but I remember when some other Montana town, um, the entire town had to go on a boil order last year.
Blood die.
Yeah. Um, this is my old city, actually.
Get somewhere in there.
No. Um. And I remember asking Mr. Gager, you know, when was the last time Livingston was on a boil order? And nobody knows the answer, because you guys are doing such a good job. It's a really big deal. And I, um, don't think people realize that you're working every single day, or that somebody is working every single day, just like police and fire. And that you're being woken up in the middle of the night so that we can all have water. It's such a huge deal. We really appreciate you. It's like one of the most important things is clean water, maybe the most important thing. So thank you, it's a big deal. Um, also, I would give up, I'm just gonna volunteer my shelf in the commissioner office if you ever have broken pipe. I'll take all my stuff off of it, and you can put some broken pipe in there for the commissioners. I'd be happy. I mean, it'd be nice for this like at least hosed off a little bit before it came in, but.
Water pipe specifically.
But specifically preferred, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I'll leave that there. Um, it is about, it's almost seven. Are you all good with just a little break before we come back for more?
I was gonna make a motion to, uh, take a break for ten minutes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, so we're gonna take a break for ten. Um, yeah, see you in ten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Quickly, you wanted to forget. I would do it.
It's not like riding a bike.
You're doing great. Thank you, Melissa.
Oh, you're so kind. Um, and you're able to hear everything, okay? Like, it's all sounding.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I can hear it all. Yes, so thank you.
So are we back? Are we ready?
We are.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We're gonna pick back up where we left off. On action item B, presentation of proposed water restrictions, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newt. The item before you is, um, a, uh, review and comment. On, um, some draft water restrictions that, uh, that the staff and I have been working on, um, for the last several months. And, um, we started this project in, uh, probably in, in January in, in earnest. Um, recognizing that we were, uh, trending towards a, a lighter-than-average snowpack. And, uh, and recognizing the, uh, natural correlation between snow and water resources, although. Uh, because we have, uh, well water, as recently explained, we're at a little bit, uh, less precarious situation than some others. That, uh, that rely on surface water for, for their system, so, um, you know, in, uh. In, in light of the lower-than-normal snowpack, uh, team and I, um, shifted towards, you know, understanding what. Uh, what abilities we had, um, to, to help prepare for, um, the, the upcoming summer. And, uh, and, and potentially, um, lighter, uh, lighter water. And so while, while we do not have, um, really concerns about the ability to produce and, uh, supply the water. That the, the, the community, uh, may use this summer, um, we do recognize that, that really, uh, the, the water system. Exists for multiple purposes, one certainly is capable of clean drinking water, uh, but the other is fire protection. And in a situation where we expect we may have a, uh, drier summer, um. Instituting, um, or at least creating, uh, some water restrictions really will help us on two fronts. Um, to ensure that there's adequate water supplies for drinking, but also for fire protection. And so, uh, the team has been working with, um, a statewide group, uh, and, and specifically some other. Um, entities in the Upper Yellowstone, uh, River area. And, uh, we have devised a, uh, four-stage, um, process for water restrictions that I will invite. Uh, Greg to introduce, um, and, uh, and the water team to present. So Greg, turn to review.
Commissioners, as the city manager alluded to, you know, the purpose of the first presentation, uh, that was given tonight was really to educate. Everyone on how the water system works, and, uh, you know, as we all know, it was a dry winter. And, you know, that's a concern, so, um, we just wanted to put together this pre- you know, presentation, make these proposed recommendations. And present that, so.
All right. Well. So kind of, poaching off the previous, uh, presentation and. Kind of the water pump and, uh, our capacity of our wells. And some total gallons pumped over the last, uh, well, since two thousand eighteen, and seeing what our increase is. Um. I think the timing, Mr. Gager, uh, brought up is, is perfect, so I, I represent the city of Livingston on the Upper Yellowstone Watershed Coalition. Uh, fantastic group of people, um. Uh, stakeholders, ranchers, um, environmental groups, uh, the guiding industry, you name it, municipality. There's no denying, City of Livingston, we're the largest municipality in Park County, we are the largest water user. Um, so I've been working with that group, and, um, we have compiled a, a draft. Of Upper Yellowstone Drought Management Plan, and it's been quite impressive that, um. The, our passion for the Yellowstone River, um, everybody's willing to make some sacrifices. Um, that includes, you know, hay is our number one agricultural product. We have ranchers that are willing to make some sacrifices, even though they do have water rights off the Yellowstone River, so, um. This, or this four stages kind of coincides with that Upper Yellowstone Drought Management Plan. Um, I'm sure Ashley Lowry and that group, the DNRC, I know Max, uh, from PCEC participates in that. Um, we, that, that document is gonna be unveiled here shortly, and, um. Upon discussion tonight, we'd like to have, um, the four stages that Livingston has included in that document, so. Um. We'll go to the next. Slide, so, um, you know, our municipal codes currently very vague. Um, it basically just says the city manager has the ability to implement water restrictions, so we wanna be open and transparent with what those are. And, and have an opportunity to explain why we have them, uh, for each of those four stages, so. Um, stage one, uh, we actually. Implemented a stage one last year, um, via social media. Uh, we didn't really see any, uh, impact to our water demand in town. But, um, I think having a voluntary restriction just to kind of alert the general public. That, um, maybe future stages are coming is, is a good thing. So, uh, stage one really is just voluntary, and that's when Ryan and, and Chuck are, are watching those. Daily well, you know, the well totals, and if we're starting to really dip into the reserve of our reservoirs. We're gonna do that voluntary restriction, so if we're exceeding that thirty-one hundred gallons per minute, um, demand, uh, see the stage one. Stage two, um, everyone in the city can irrigate, um, with the exception of. The times of four AM to nine AM, and I've been asked questions on why those times, well, that allows. Our wells to pump up to the one million, and then gives us time to, to be able to recharge the two million and the ninety thousand, so. Your average yard, seven thousand square foot yard, probably has four or five, uh, zones on your sprinkler system. There should be plenty of time from when the sun sets around ten o'clock, uh, you know, nine-thirty, ten, to four in the morning to be able to adequately still water your. Your yard, but we ask that everybody does not water from four to nine, and that includes our city parks. Now, there will be some city parks that you'll see sprinkled at that time, but those are not on city water. Those are on wells that we have, you know, in the park, so Sacagawea Park is on, is on.
Independent.
Yep. Stage three, um, so that's when we cut it, we get into the even and odd, so. Um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, from eight to, uh, nine AM, um. We're looking at even number addresses, being able to sprinkle on those times, and then odd, uh, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. And then odd, uh, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, and then public parks will be uh, watered on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And so that that stage is gonna be when. We're at that thirty-one hundred demand and we're dipping down into seventy percent of of the two million and the one million reservoir. So that would still give us uh, seven hundred thousand gallons of reserve in the one million and one point four in the two million. And a lot of that is gonna be driven by just making sure that we have adequate capacity if we were to have a fire event in Livingston. Um. Talking to the fire chief, it would not be uncommon to use six to eight hundred thousand gallons in one fire event in our town, so. And then stage four is is really just citywide restrictions on all outdoor water uses, um, and I. I don't see that happening, um, but if we had a well go down and we're only pumping with five. We have a major water main break, um, something happens, maybe it's sun not lumber, um, or we have actually a wildfire near here. We have, we have been a stakeholder in in providing water for forest fires and and the fire crews. Um, those would be some scenarios where I'd see a stage four, where we just. Ask everybody to not irrigate at all. Now, one of the most important things about these restrictions, um. Really is education, so I'm happy to say in my eleven years of being here, I, Ryan and I actually. Created the first account uh, set aside for water conservation. Uh, we don't have a lot of money in it. But we're hoping that we can provide some educational materials for our general public, um, on just. You know, the proper way to operate a sprinkler system, or just give them some knowledge on sprinkler systems, um. You know, landscape, dryscaping. Types of native uh, vegetation that's drought resistant and tolerant. I think we can make some great strides with just promoting that. Those types of education materials, so. Um. So, yeah.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
We uh, we'll stand for any questions that the the commission may have.
I think we'll go ahead and start with public again. And then come back to the commission just so we can wrap it all in. Um. Um, folks in the room, any questions or comments on what you just heard? I'll look online then. Anybody online? Alright, not seeing anyone. Going, going. Comment closed. Um, alright commissioners, who would like to go first? Commissioner Schwartz.
So these uh, drought stages, this is what's being proposed?
That's correct.
Yeah, does that have to go to. Ordinance or resolution or just? City managers uh, to determine as it. What it says. Third municipal code, so. Sounds reasonable to me. Are you?
Commissioner Lyons.
Um, I I love the, I love and appreciate the forethought. Um, and I think that it makes your your job easier, and this is coming from like a uh, like a political understanding. It makes your job easier to enact restrictions. If you set up that framework before you have to make any of those decisions, so it's it's smart. Um. I think that the stages make sense to me. I actually really appreciated in in Shannon's presentation. Um, the explanation of what triggers those stages. I don't think I saw that in the packet. Um, and that makes it even easier to interpret, and I think that that would be useful information to the public and kind of however this gets presented to the public. I'd wanna see that in there.
Yeah.
Um. One nitpick uh, is in the verbiage on stage four. It reads city restrictions on all outdoor water uses are prohibited. To me, that reads. Restrictions are prohibited, uh, which I don't think is the intent for stage four, so I would re- I would. Um, reword that one. Uh, and that's, that's all from my comments.
Mm hmm. Commissioner Welch.
Uh, no, Commissioner Lyons pretty much said, I just was looking for trigger points and you had her mind down in the presentation, so. Which one, mate? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh. Chair Kale. I saw you come up mute earlier.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I did have a question about stage three. Um, and the timing of when folks could water and wondered why it wouldn't be. Like eight PM to four AM. So that would be sort of consistent with stage two? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mr. Gager.
Uh, yeah, it's a a a great point, Chair, and I'll I'll open it up to the the public works team for any thoughts.
Well, I. Part of this presentation was actually getting, um, you know, making the presentation and getting your comments, so um, I think we're comfortable. Just knowing that you're going to an even odd in a city park. That, you know, we're talking about more or less half of the residents that we're limiting um, to water at those times, so we. Wanted to provide some flexibility, but we're still comfortable that. That if if people follow the even odd address, that that there's gonna be enough. There to to make a difference in keeping our our reservoirs filled. But by all means, um, if we wanna keep that consistent with the four AM, I mean, we're. I think we'd be happy with that as well. That just, that adds in another, you know, five hours. Of of non-watering time.
Mm hmm. Just curious, yeah, then. I wonder if we teach people one time, maybe it's easier to leave them at that same time, so then they don't get confused, but. But maybe if they already know it, they'll they'll stop at four, you know, in the morning anyway, so.
Mm hmm. Anything else, Chair Kale?
Um, I was also wondering, I know, um, we had, we started like stage one is the voluntary, then we get into the next stages. Um, what happens if we have folks who are not um, following the rules?
That's a a fantastic question, Chair. Um, in the uh, Livingston municipal code, as we pointed out, uh, section thirteen dash sixty-five. Uh, provides the city manager the ability to uh, create the restrictions we're talking about here. Um, unprinted in the packet is section thirteen dash sixty-six, which provides penalties. Um, for the disobedience of uh, of water uh, rules and restrictions, and also simply for the. Uh egregious waste of water in in streets in the public right of way, um, and uh, the. Not abide by those restrictions is punishable by a misdemeanor under city code.
Mm hmm.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I guess I would start by saying. Um, I agree with Chair Kale. I think, um. It might. Make the most sense from the citizen perspective, if there was some consistency, just make it easier for. The community as we're learning new habits. Then I have to like, be like, oh, what stage, what time? Um. Also, some feedback I've heard from the community. About sharing information with the public is that a lot of people aren't on social media media or choose not to be on social media. And I recently had the question, um, would the consider, would the city ever consider something like the equivalent of a nixle, right, where you could opt into a text, and so when there was. Breaking news from the city, right, it could be, um. A garbage truck is out of service, and so trash isn't gonna get picked up on time, or it could be. Um, a water main broke, so if you live in this part of town and you're. You might be out of water for a few hours, or it could be something like this, restrictions are in place that people could opt in, so that was. Some feedback I got, I thought it would just pass along, um. Seems like this could be another use of that kind of system, um. I would also add. Um. Sacagawea Park, um, in line with what Chair Kale was saying about stages two and three. I wonder if it wouldn't be in the city's best interest to get Sacagawea Park watering on the same. Preferred time. If for no other reason than to to provide a model for the community of like the appropriate times to water. Um, also. All of us are park users. And it would be nice. You know, potentially to have it watered when people aren't in the park rather than when people are. In the park. Um, also could be a good time to check our sprinklers and make sure we're not flooding the underpass, for example. Um. Just if we wanna set that model for the community, if the community can't do it, then the city should not do it either. Um. I like the idea of the water conservation, dryscaping native plants. I think we have a lot of. Potential partners in town. I've had a lot of people talk to me about wanting to see the city move in this direction, so it wouldn't necessarily be something we'd have to do on our own. I think that. Um, the public works team might find that there's some partners that are willing to help carry the load on that, since it's a. A community priority, so just thinking about that. Um. And then the last thing I wanna say is, um. This has been on my mind for a long time. As a commissioner, I know I've brought it up in meetings. I am really um, marrying what Commissioner Lyons said about the forethought that you're putting into this. This is definitely your role and not ours. And so I appreciate your leadership on this. I appreciate that you're moving it forward. I also really appreciate tonight that we saw a very different local government. Where you brought in staff. At all different levels of the organization, and we can hear from the people doing the work. There's maybe nothing more exciting. As a commissioner than to see the way, um. To see the way things are moving, because I've gotten public feedback too, that the public likes this. They like to see who these folks are. Driving the trucks around town and to meet them, so thank you. Um. Best presentation ever for that. From my opinion.
You.
Yeah, um. That's all that I have about this. Thank you. I think that it looks really thoughtful. It seems like you collaborated. There's a lot of really good ideas here. Um, I think it's smart.
Well, thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the feedback.
Mm hmm. Alright, so moving on then.
Moving on, oh.
Um, I would.
Chair Newt.
I would actually have to Mr. Gager since.
Yeah, Shannon.
I I just, I left out a very, very important part of this presentation, and I just, and it it's actually back to you as the commission. You started this water conservation process last year when you approved the tiered water rates, so thank you for that. Um. We understand that, you know, we have a lot of people. And water rates and rates in general are rather contentious, but um, I think we as the water department, um, appreciate that you uh, supported the tiered water rates. Um, we would like to revisit that again through, you know, the budget process this year, but but you really. The commission started this process and and looking at water conservation when you did the tiered water rates last July, so. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Shannon. I would um, say that perhaps we started it when we hired Mr. Gager. Just a thought. Cause you brought us the water rates. So thank you. Um. Alright, so now we're to action item C. Approval of two city-county compact chapters. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt, or Vice Chair Newt, sorry.
Okay.
With all due respect, Chair Kale, um, uh, the item before the the commission is um, the consideration of two chapters. Uh, in the city-county compact and um, the the two chapters are uh, chapter zero, which. Contains administrative provisions that uh, will generally um, apply to. To to all chapters and then we establish the framework uh, for the compact, and then uh, chapter one. Um, deals with perhaps our our largest partnership, which is the the building that that we occupy today, and so. Um, as as noted in the staff report, the uh, city of Livingston and Park County. Um, have cooperated on the the management supervision of uh, various assets and operations over the years. And uh, and we do that largely through the city-county compact. Uh, this, the compact has been uh, expired for for several years ago, and so you may recall. Uh, it was uh, one year and one week ago uh, today, um, that we met with the the county commissioners. And uh, and had a discussion on the operations of this building. And and those conversations are uh, are memorialized in uh, chapter one of the compact. Uh, and and they do uh, slightly modify the the contribution rates um, of of the the city and the county to the. Uh, various operations of this building, um, to more accurately reflect the use of the building since um, city operations have. Uh, largely transitioned out of uh, this building with the exception of our our police and fire uh, staffs. And so um, I I do apologize for the the delay in getting uh, this chapter zero and chapter one uh, back to you, some uh. Conversations uh, with the the county, um, were a little bit prolonged as they've had some changeover. And uh, and 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 some of their leadership there, so um, I do expect that that you will see additional chapters of uh, of this compact here. Over the next two months as we uh, work towards the the start of the new fiscal year, so. Uh, with that said, I will stand for any questions the commissioner, the commission may have.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, any clarifying questions about the compact chapters? Um, and I recognize too that some of this conversation started, um, Commissioner Willidge before you were here too, so I just wanna honor that space if you. If there's anything you feel like you need to get up to speed with, we can hold space for that too.
It's a pretty.
Okay.
Standard.
Great.
Track language.
Um, no follow-up questions?
Um, I. Um. No.
Chair Kale, anything?
Nothing clarifying, yeah, man.
Okay. Not seeing any, um. How about a motion?
I'll make a. A motion to approve chapters zero and one. And um, friends. I move to approve chapter zero and one of city-county compact unauthorized, chair to sign.
Mm hmm.
Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. Uh, public comment. So we'll start in the room. Any public comment on the compact chapters? No? Okay, looking online? Anybody online? This is exciting stuff. Exciting meeting tonight. Nobody wants to comment? I can't believe it. Alright. Public comment for action item C is closed. Commissioners. Commissioner Schwartz.
Um. Not having uh, the old chapter one, um, our percentage is still about the same as a ban. Because basically. Since I've been. Commissioner. Our use of the space hasn't really changed at all.
Hmm.
Where the. Police chief and stuff, that was city manager and and legal before, so.
Mm hmm.
So nothing's really. Changed percent or or ratio, ratios haven't really changed or anything like that.
Um, no, the the one ratio that that has changed, um, you will note on page seventy-seven of the packet.
Okay.
Um, in the finances section, items number three and four, which relate to capital costs and.
Oh, okay.
Utilities are at uh, the the county is responsible for sixty-three percent of those costs and the city for thirty-seven. Um, the primary change that that we're bringing forward is is on item number one, which relates to the operational costs of the common areas of the facility.
Okay.
Those used to be shared uh, in that same sixty-three, thirty-seven ratio, um, and and that has been modified here to be seventy-seven. Uh, percent to the county, twenty-three percent to the city, announced through the discussion that we had, I believe, last April thirtieth, about the state.
Yeah, no, that that looks right. Okay, um, that's all I have. Are you?
Mm hmm. Other commissioners? So we're to deliberation. Thoughts? Chair Kale, anything? No? Um. Uh, Mr. Gager, thank you. I know this has been a minute, but there's also been a lot going on. Not just in the county, in the city too, so thanks for keeping it moving forward. I do feel like. The first time we might have seen a draft of this, I can't remember if it would have been. Just conversation about it or a draft of it during the previous administration.
And all the rivers to talk about updating it.
Yeah, so I think, um.
Finally doing it.
Yeah, it seems like your um, touches on this. Yeah?
Yes, uh, the the county and I have had uh. Several conversations and have certainly made some changes um, to what was previously presented to you.
Great, it seems like an improvement from what I remember. So thanks for your work on it. Um. No, it's great to get it going. Nothing else? We're ready for a vote?
I think so.
Uh, roll please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willidge.
For.
Motion passes. Alright, next on the agenda. Is city manager comments. Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. I had a uh fun and very informative week in uh. South Dakota with the other city managers last week, so we'll have uh some updates and and probably some new uh ideas and and processes. That that you'll see uh from that over the coming months. And uh so I thank um, thank you and also city staff for uh. Bearing with me while I was out of the office for a few days.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I would, uh, I'd really like to just thank all of the staff who uh took time away from their families tonight to be here. And uh share some of their knowledge with the the commission. Uh, I recognize seven forty-one is probably. Little bit about the time you pulled into work this morning, uh, and not later than that. So uh you're you're pushing thirteen or fourteen hours on the clock and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Willage.
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, I'll echo Mr. Gager's comments. I learned a lot tonight. Had, it was actually one of the more fun. Meetings I've had in a while, so thanks for educating us. It's been, it's been really informative and. You know, it's real, as uh Chair Ca- Kale mentioned, you know, it's very important work and I see there to be a lot more ahead of us. But we are now armed with a lot more knowledge than we were before. And that'll help us make better decisions on behalf of behalf of the residents, so really appreciate it.
Thanks. Commissioner Schwartz.
I guess I'll go back to my comments that I made um to um. The previous meeting regarding um. Uh, the car show and uh. Ms. Feigl, um, just basically coming out on social media and saying that um. The uh application for the car show was um denied. And that's it. No explanation or anything like that, which raised all kinds of hell. Um, with people around town. And uh wanting our heads and the city managers head and everything else. Um. But I also expressed, you know, I wish we could all work together on this. Um, this was easily resolved. Um, with the city manager and the president of the uh, the car club and uh. Um. That's all I was getting to. Um, but um. Putting something out there without explaining it and uh, um. It's unfortunate and I don't think um that needs to happen. Um, could have, all this um controversy could have been um. Um, avoided just by with a few words. Um. Uh, the application was rejected because of the hours um or the time, the time of day or the day. Um, et cetera, et cetera. So, um. That's how, uh, that's how all this crap starts and I'm I'm sick and tired of it. And uh, um. When I see it happen, I'm gonna call it up. Well. If I hurt anybody's feelings, I'm sorry, but um. Um, that's the way I see it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Um, I believe. Uh, at the last time we got together, we talked about Commissioner Listening Sessions. Mr. Gager, is that still?
Absolutely.
Or is that something you're able to work on to figure out what we need to do to be able to make that happen? Um, so, coming soon. Do you think maybe the next agenda, we might be able to talk about it? Is there some space for that? Okay. Um, so in the before times, the before COVID times, we used to do Commissioner Listening Sessions. Um. I guess we're the old timers. You and me too on the commission that would have done that.
But I anticipate that would be just a.
A a nice time to talk about what the commission is deciding versus what the city manager does, because a lot of the things that. People are coming at Mr. Gager for were actually commission decisions, not Mr. Gager decisions. Um. So I would, I would say, you know, I think. Some folks have felt oh, um. Felt like the appropriate place perhaps to critique staff is at public meetings and that's just not the case. If you have issues about staff, um, the city manager is your appropriate audience. Staff have a right to privacy just like everyone else. Um, so please take those to Mr. Gager. If you have concerns about Mr. Gager, he also has a right to privacy. Please bring that to the commission. Our emails are all online. Um.
That's our phone numbers.
And our phone numbers, yep. And I um would say that. You know, we signed up for this, so any of us, I think, would be. Willing to hear the public in that regard. Um, I know the chair and I have worked together when the roles were reversed and together to do that as well if people have concerns. So, um, that's the appropriate space, not a public meeting. Um. Which I think kind of falls a little bit in line with what Commissioner Schwartz might have been on your mind with.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the things that have been happening recently. Yep. Um, also wanna say, I really thought tonight was fantastic. Um, you, it's really raised the bar for. Um, what meetings can be like with learning from staff, because there's a lot the staff know that the commission does not know and we have to make decisions on it. So thank you. Super fun, really interesting. It's the meeting to be, from my perspective. Um, I yield. Chair Kale. Oh, but first, thank you guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, now Chair Kale.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to thank uh city staff as well for all that wonderful information. And sorry, I couldn't be in the room with all, with you this evening. Um, but love the information. Thank you for the work. Love that you're reaching out and working with other organizations, but the drought plan, um, I think that's really wonderful. Thank you so much for providing us with clean water. I'm actually in a. And I mean, a very small municipality right now that has city water and we are drinking, we drink bottled water. Um, here, so I don't drink the water that comes out of the faucet in this house. Um, so thank you very much for uh providing uh the city of Livingston with with safe drinking water. Uh, Vice Chair Newt, thank you so much for chairing this evening. Um, I miss you all and hope to be home soon. Um, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair.
I yield.
And thanks for your patience with my um resting notes. Um.
No. Doing the thing.
Doing the thing. Um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lyons, second by Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven forty PM.
Not bad.
Night, everybody.